I will call the Lawrence County Council Committee, Committee on Parks, Recreation, Tourism, Natural Resources to order. As usual, we have a meeting in progress, and we'll go over next. Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us here today so we may conduct the business of this county. Let all hearts and minds be clear and open so that we can make the best judgment on what is right. Dear Lord, just help us as we go through this meeting and into the next, in your name we pray.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to go ahead and meet inside the first edition to hear the details from the Lake Greenwood Master Plan. And I see we've come up with some kind of agreement on how to go forward with the plan that Greenwood has put in place, and if we'll look at PowerPoint from the legislature.
Mr. Chairman, this is basically a restatement or a re-open of the explanation we was looking to come up about a month ago, I think, for council. And Lawrence County has been involved in the planning effort today, I want to feel here, for supervision, even in the committee, I think. I sat in on several sessions they had, and I think the whole council, I believe, everybody that went down to Lake Greenwood, back in the fall, that year, that explanation. I think the Greenwood County paid for this, and they were, and actually, get Lawrence County and Newberry County involved in it, and I think what, just for, of course, discussion after the, after the presentation, I think, I think what they're looking for is maybe just a proof of concept right there, and then, you know, I'd be more detailed later on. But then, I'll, I'll turn back over and say, I would be delighted to.
Yes, I'm pleased. Mr. Chairman, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell, Daniel. Appreciate the opportunity again to be with you. I did want to bring to you today just the plan one more time. Nothing has changed since your last meeting, there's been no modifications to the, to the plan itself. We are at the point now where Greenwood County is looking to move the project forward as best we can. We certainly would love to have Lawrence County's participation, perhaps adoption of the plan, participation in the governmental committee with Newberry County, and in move forward with Newberry County to get them on board as well. They're the third, third leg of this stool, and we want to make sure that we're all moving forward on that. Greenwood County is, is looking to move as quickly as possible, but certainly not without the other partners in Lawrence and Newberry. They, you know, see the, the late season coming upon us very quickly, and there's some things that Greenwood County would like to see move forward within this calendar year, and so certainly would love to have the participation of Lawrence to discuss a number of different things that are identified within the plan for implementation, and, bless you, and discuss with you and Newberry County a work program to kind of say, this, this is more important than this other step, let's, let's go to step one, and step two, step three, and do that together as a group. So that's really where we are. I have provided to you just a three-page explanation of just where we are, an executive summary of the document. The first page is basically the same information that was provided to you after regular council meetings, and then, on the second page is some sample projects for possible implementation in one and two. That's directly from the plan, and you can look through those, and some of the things that, that may be listed as priorities within the next one to two years. And certainly, I don't want to be, I don't want to say, these are what we're going to do, because I have no idea what we're going to do. We would love for the Intergovernmental Committee to, to say, hey, let's get together, let's look at everything, and let's put together a work program for the next, next two years, and say, these are the things that we really want to focus on and move forward. But that's, just gives you an idea, as some of the things that, that we're just kind of looking at as far as possible, here to look for. And then the third page is a possible overview of the Intergovernmental Committee establishment, how we're looking at being formed, and it doesn't have to be that way, that's just kind of a, an idea that we have, and is certainly open for discussion between Greenwood, Lawrence, and Newberry. But I have some slides here, if you'd like to look more in depth with the plan, or if you have specific questions about the plan, I'd be glad to address those. But that's, that's real, really the overview of the information, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know this is, this is inter-county stipulation, it would be something new, fairly new to Lawrence County, we've done it, I guess, with council governments and other inter, interlocal things we've done in the past, but this would be a, and not recently, but in the years past, this county has had a very close relationship with Greenwood County in the area of EMS, fire protection, the lake itself, you know, with rescue, that sort of thing, managing the lake, which is something else, we were all on something like that.
Right.
It's not all that new, that's, that's a factor to Greenwood County, I think, that we would have to put into it. In reviewing the doc, in reviewing the, both the executive summary and the, and the plan, I would say there's more, more of a conceptual basis right now with, you know, without specifics to it, with the plan use, for example, you know, we're not going to, Lawrence County is not going to blow Lake Greenwood right now, you know, that, that may be in the future from now on, but right now, that, that's just not the, the, the field.
Right.
You know, there may be some things in the area of water quality, Chairman Wood mentioned about water quality, and maybe safety tank inspections, and I know D H does that, but I mean, I, I, we, just feeling, I heard about some programs today where, where there may be some grant money available, some of that, maybe, you know, put down the road somewhere or something.
Right.
And I, we're talking with Chair, the committee chairman, was very brief, you know, we could, for example, provide copies of this document to our building code office, maybe the flood works department, that, you know, that they're involved in certain things, doing roads and subjects, that kind of thing, sort of as a guidepost, maybe, something that, that could be looked at, you know, in view of, not, again, not hardcore land use regulation, but at least a, a guide to kind of, you know, to, to, to go with. Now, I know that's not exactly what Greenwood County is dealing with, but I think in fact, we all agreed early on that this would be a county council-driven process, that, you know, each county could decide, you know, kind of on its own, what, what the process would be.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think, I think, I think we even understand that, and is that?
Yes, sir. There, in, in no way do, does Greenwood County want to tell Lawrence County or Newberry County what's best for them, and certainly, we don't want the same thing other counties telling us what to do. We have that enough from the state level, so we certainly don't want, you know, that between ourselves. We just feel like this Intergovernmental Committee would be a great opportunity for individuals that we all appoint, or, you know, it could be any of you that you appoint to this group, just to have discussions, and say, this is what we're doing in Newberry County. You may want to try that. It's, it's nothing where this group would be mandating anybody to do anything, but just sharing of information, making ideas available, maybe being an advocate, if you feel that there's a need to advocate for something on the lake, and that would be a great group to, to utilize, to move something forward. We, we see this as a way to share information together and work together versus allowing for all three counties to come together and bring input and discussion to a certain, certain point, to have your voice heard, basically. For a while, you know, it's been all three of us, the three counties, kind of doing our own thing, and it would be great if we were able to say, hey, you know, we're looking at doing this on our side of the lake, this is how we're doing it, we're funding it through hospitality tax, or this other grant source, do you want to pull our, our resources together and work together, do you want to apply for this grant together? You know, we found working together with other agencies with their own county certainly makes us more marketable for grants and other opportunities, so we feel that this would be a great opportunity as well. You did mention funding, Greenwood County has not identified any funding sources for this, and has not budgeted any money for this, as I know of, and we don't expect at this point for the county to come around and ask for other counties to provide money for this. It, it's just, and you can see some of those things on sample projects, really are no money or very little funding provided for those. I think one of the things such as signage, welcome signs that we're looking at in Greenwood, or welcome to Lake Greenwood kind of signs, we're looking to fund those through our hospitality tax as a potential option. So it's, it's nothing where, it's a situation where we're going to say, you know, we're going to require a hundred thousand dollars for you to sit at a table for a year and participate. That's, that's not the intent, that's not the intent designated within this plan. This, this committee and your adoption of this plan is just to use it as a guidepost and a, an idea as to what, where we can move towards together as a group, and share that information between, and our ideas between the three counties.
Have you said anything, Dave, before we really just want to start trying to do some particular mail?
No, that's what I was going to give you, in a second now. Do you want to go through PowerPoint, or are you?
Um, it's really not too much that you've seen, this is the overall study area, with the majority of your county located here, this portion of here being Newberry, and the southern end, southwest end being Greenwood County, the number of different partners that have been involved in this process, and that we've worked with, and they've shared their ideas and thoughts. The Cracking Masters logo just caught my eye, they're in town this weekend, and they're going to be out of the lake this weekend, looking at the areas for the upcoming tournament. This is our land use, I've shown you before of the entire area, how we currently utilize that area, and this is from November, so that, that information is already outdated, with new development and new housing that's, that's been approved and constructed in this area. But overwhelmingly, like I mentioned before, the area is agricultural and rural, and we certainly want to keep that. This is the vision map, the idea that came out of all of our months of meeting, we see all the light green areas, we want to maintain that rural sense, a, a character within the area of the lake, but we have specific areas that we can see the potential for new development, and a large amount of that is on the Lawrence County side. There's a lot of undeveloped areas on Lawrence County's side of the lake, so you have a tremendous opportunity for increased tax base, employment centers, and those kinds of things, that most likely will come to Lawrence County because of the lake and the resource that it is. And certainly, infrastructures will, will come with that, and so we want to, to look at ideas and ways to encourage that development, and place it in areas that are best suited to it for the infrastructure needs.
Where, where is Newberry with the plan right now?
Newberry is, is in the infancy. We talked with them early on, and their thought was, is that they wanted to make sure Greenwood County and Lawrence County, since they were the majority land owners or landholders of this, this area of the study, adopted the plan. And so our intent is, once New, Lawrence County passes it, that we move to Newberry County and get their input. As, you know, shown there on the, on the map, Lawrence County, I think, Newberry County has a very small portion of their area on Lake Greenwood, and the majority of their county is focused towards Lake Murray. So they really consider Lake Greenwood as a pond compared to, to all the issues on, on Lake Murray, and that's understandable, but we certainly want to have their input, they have a number of property owners on the lake that have opinions and have issues that we would like to include, and we'd like to, to have their involvement in. A lot of Newberry County on their lakefront has already been developed, so as far as future development, it's very, it's very little that can be done unless it's some kind of redevelopment that occurs in that area. So from that, you can kind of see, they want to see that Newberry, they want to see that Lawrence and Greenwood are invested in this before they, they move forward.
I guess you might start asking, would you go for a question, counsel, if you have any?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And thank you again, Mr. Wood, for all your hard work, and all the partners that are collaborating on this, this is, Lake Greenwood is just such an asset to all three of these counties. Just out of curiosity, do you know right off how many miles each county has on the, on the lake there, or do you, that's kind of a trivial question.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, okay.
It's in our planned documents.
Okay.
We have, I can get it for you.
Which is very thorough, yeah.
Don't have, don't, off the top of my head.
I think on this side, it's thirty.
Thirty miles.
And I think we've got, I think Lawrence has got more lakefront than Greenwood.
Yes, you have more shoreline than we do on our side.
Okay, and I like the, yeah, I, I think it would be great to go forward with a collaboration and discussions on an intergovernmental agreement between counties. I can definitely see the need for a standard of land use between the three counties, you know, on the lake there, but also, there's, you know, there's some positives to having some differences too.
Absolutely.
You know, Lawrence can have some different things, and Greenwood, so, yeah, I, I really, I like where this is going, and that's more of a comment, not a question, but thank you.
Now, you said Newberry is looking at Lawrence and Greenwood, is there any little proof adopted the plan?
Yes, ma'am, they have adopted it the last week of November, last year.
Oh, last of November, okay. Okay, so after we are able to adopt it, then we will look at trying to have an intergovernmental group, I mean, committee?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, okay, and we're going into this with no particular requirements at all, no monies, no, what you got to know, it's just that we're going to work together?
That's correct. Um, I can't say, I can't stand here before you and say, you will never have to pay more than five dollars for anything moving forward with this plan, but I can say that the intent at the very beginning is that we all come together, and if, if the three groups say, hey, let's put in money, that's certainly understandable, or our recommendation to Lawrence County Council is that we put in money to fund this, or fund this other program that's vital to all three of us. That could potentially happen, but there's nothing, at this point, where we've, like I said, identified any budget for it, any future costs, any estimates of, of what anything would cost. But the intent at this point, right now, and the overall intent of the entire project really is to work together.
Okay. Without any regulation, which I know is mentioned here.
Yes, sir.
If something came on Lawrence's side of the lake, that, it could be anything, bigger landfill, you know, that Greenwood County is standing for it, what would there be an immediate, I'm trying to say here, of, it's easy to control, it's easy to control what goes on Greenwood's side, when it comes to Lawrence's side, because y'all, you know, Greenwood has regulations in place, and, and, and we don't. Do you ever, do, would you ever foresee a time when that could be a huge problem, if, you know, if, if something went on, went in on this side that you all found absolutely what, you know, just couldn't live with, or is that pretty much our business?
I, I don't think there's anything on your side that we would feel, well, I think, looking at everything that we've gone through the past year, I have seen that there's a direct correlation between what happens on Lawrence County's side affects Greenwood, and the same thing, what happens on our side affects your side.
Right.
You, we can't, just because there's a line there, doesn't mean that things stop at those areas, and, and we've seen that in this planning effort. But if there's something that's going on in Greenwood County, for instance, it's, it's a Greenwood County matter, but if it affects other people in other areas, then certainly someone has an opinion about it, and certainly could, could work towards helping, in this case, Lawrence County with that, that situation. You bring up zoning, yes, we do have zoning in, in Greenwood County, but I can tell you that it's not perfect.
Right.
And there are a lot of things that we want to change about our zoning on the Greenwood side in response to some of these things that have come up in the plan, because we identify some areas for commercial, and right now, we have them as residential, or we allow all kinds of development in certain areas that are specifically targeted for residential. So we've got some work on our end to do, and if you, Lawrence County decided you wanted to get into the land use side, that's certainly up to you as to whether you wanted to do that. I can tell you from working in Greenwood County for a number of years with our zoning ordinance, it's a love-hate relationship that you have, because there are things you like about it, and there are things that, that you don't like about it, so you, you need to make sure that it's, it works for you. And that's kind of where we are, is trying to make it work for us, even though we've had it for, for a while now. But again, going back to this, this group, if there's a way for this group to work together on an issue, whether it be a landfill or something like that.
That's a bad example, I know, that, that, we, we run into something in Pickens County, we've been keeping up the coal ash situation.
Right.
That's a big company, over a hundred and twenty acres or so, up in Lawrence County, or, or, well, what do you call it, title, title two landfill, class two landfill, used to be C and D.
Right.
And they, Lawrence County tried to object, or did object, to try to change our plan, and enter the lawsuit, so luckily, we should back off, private citizens who actually went to court and beat that thing, based on need to D H, that's the one. Now, there's some, there's some rumblings about, they're still on property, and rumblings about, they may decide to do something else with it, everybody up in the county is, you know, afraid it's going to be a coal ash, and that would be said publicly, you know, that, that's kind of, you know, these property lines that sometimes are a little complicated sometimes, and you think you might face that.
Right.
And that's, that, that, that picking is, that's sixty, seventy miles, maybe, Lake Greenwood, right here, so.
And I'll tell you too, with the involvement that we've had with Connect Lake Greenwood and Preserving Lake Greenwood, they are a big advocacy network that we have here locally. I think you'll hear a lot more from those type of groups than you would from Greenwood County.
I'm sure you're right.
You know, from those, those aspects, and they have a right to, to have concerns about that, because those are Lawrence County people that would be involved with that. So, yeah, I, I think it's a team effort kind of thing, and kind of looking towards that.
Overall, overall goal is to improve the, the lake and how the lake got corrected, and how it can be an economic development to the, our three counties.
That's right.
If I could add one more question, clarify, if Lawrence County Council, this committee decides in their wisdom, you know, that they won't proceed with this, and the county council, it could be presented early next week, if, you know, what the committee wants to do.
Yes, sir.
If they decide that they want to pass a resolution to go along with this, stating certain things that they have an opinion on about, such as funding, such as land use, such as, would that be a problem for Greenwood County if, I mean, if, if those rules were set out in a written document?
I, I don't think that they would have any opposition to that, I think they would like to see a copy of that maybe beforehand, just so that they're not surprised.
Right.
Or maybe, you know, share a bit of input or, or anything like that, or lay any concerns that you might have, but beyond that, I don't see any problems.
And that would be entirely, entirely up to them, but, you know, what, I think, when we're comfortable level for these folks, we kind of get involved in something that, you know, that's been made very, very clearly, who owns the lake, we understand all that, we've been told that from time to time again. I do, though, appreciate Mr. Chappell, and you, Steve Brown, and others, I think, Wood, Seth, and some of those two, they have been most open and most cooperative in a sense of what it is, what it is he's trying to do, and that, and that's kind of a change in the, in the attitude, and I think we all appreciate that.
That's right.
That, that's helped a lot to get, you know, we, we're not there yet, but at least to get us where we, where we're hoping for anyway, so.
That's right. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chappell.
All right, and finally, finally, now, then, what did you get anything?
This Greenwood Master Plan, it's Greenwood County Council, I have a meeting this week, and it's comprised of Connect Lake Greenwood, that's one group, Preserving Lake Greenwood, that's another group, and Greenwood Tourism and Bay Area Board, that's another group, so it's three groups. So they decided that they would take one person from each of the three groups, the chairman of the county council, and a designate, designate of, and a lake citizen, it'd be five people, and that'll be the first year, that's who the committee will be comprised of. The second year, if everything goes as planned, there'll be three people from Greenwood, three people from Lawrence, and three people from Newberry County that's set on this committee. But the first year, it's going to be one from each of one of these groups, the chairman and a designate, a lake citizen. So they've got the committee for the first year, so nobody in Lawrence County will sit on the committee till the second year, if everybody agrees with that. But that was in the county making this pass, wouldn't run with it.
Can I speak with that, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, you go ahead, yeah, go with the man.
That one came up as a bit of a surprise to me when I attended the meeting Tuesday night, but I think that is, to, the intent of that was to move the project forward. If Lawrence County were to come tomorrow and say, hey, we have our three designees, we're ready to move forward on that, I think you'd see that they would move to year two very quickly, to have that set up like that versus the way that they have it now, tentatively to have the individuals from, or the five individuals that were noted there to see us.
But that was a recommendation, and council approved the recommendation by vote of six zero of councilmen, Robert, Robert Templeton was asked to be, so it's a unanimous decision by Greenwood County Council to do that for the first year.
Yes, sir.
So if you change it, I guess you got to go back to the Greenwood County Council and change.
And I think, I would say, no problem, I think they, they would be willing to change that.
Okay. Do you mind if I speak a little bit to that as well? I, I do work a little bit with the Connect Lake Greenwood folks, and the Preserving Lake Greenwood people, I've been to a lot of their meetings, they meet monthly, and I would say that, that by, by margin, majority of people on both of those groups are from Lawrence, particularly the Preserving Lake Greenwood group. Now, they, they live on the lake, and they probably associate or affiliate themselves more with Greenwood, because that's where they shop, and probably go to the hospital and doctors, that kind of thing, but a lot of them are Lawrence County residents, so. Do you mind if I, I like that?
And if, you know, once we get all the three counties together and identify this committee, if we want to have two individuals that are ad hoc members, one from Preserving Lake Greenwood, one from Connect Lake Greenwood, that's certainly up for discussion, that would be, in my, you know, small opinion, a great addition to that group, because you would have individuals from Lawrence County.
What's the difference in the two?
Connect Lake Greenwood is more of a marketing group, advocacy group for some of the neighborhoods that are on the lake, that have, that want to promote more activity on the lake, more promotions, fireworks, those kinds of activities, concerts, to get individuals out on the lake and using it more. Preserving Lake Greenwood is more natural resource-based, they're concerned with water quality issues, they're concerned with dredging and siltation within the lake, so it's, it's more the natural environment side, whereas Connect Lake Greenwood is more promotion and tourism-type activities.
Is there any conflict on the two?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, we didn't run into any of that, with that. The members are typically different, they, they don't overlap a lot, but they, with, when we've worked with them, they all work together, both of those groups work together a little.
And third one, Greenwood Tourism, that is a whole.
Yes, sir. They've been very active with the Heritage Corridor to get funding for some of the promotions and branding on the lake, as far as our tourism. and branding on the lake as far as our tourism base. This logo at the bottom left hand corner is something that they designed for the Business Bureau and they've, they've been using that for the new tournaments, fishing tournaments that are on the lake and some of the activities that occurred there. So that's kind of a starting point too, that they're looking to, to use that icon as maybe the, the brand for our lake.
Okay, so the, right now, you said the board is set up differently than is, is written out in the interjurisdictional committee establishment, but they would, you'd think Greenwood would be willing to go back to this setup, the three member board, Beach County, county council, member property owner and a business owner?
Yes, I think, I think that would be what you would want to do first, if you're willing to go forward with this, is to have a discussion with them, maybe between the managers and the administrators, or between council chairs or however you'd like to do that, and have that discussion, because we do want to bring Newberry County in, they may have a different opinion as well. But the intent at the very beginning was to have three individuals that could be appointed by council, and it could be three council members, it could be three property owners. But one, one idea that was thrown out there that gained a lot of traction in discussions in Greenwood County was to have one council member, one property owner and one business owner in from that area. And that, that can change. If you want to have four members, you know, that's all, all up for discussion and I would encourage you to discuss that with the other two counties.
Mr. Chairman, could I, I speak to that just a minute? Mr. Seagull's had a, had a perfect idea on that and I think in presenting some resolution or if council says, okay, we want to do this, you can make that a condition of accepting the plan and say, we'll adopt the master plan if we can get our three people on there and such as that and the other, the other items that Mr. Seagull has mentioned. I think that'd be a perfect way to put it to them. If they don't accept it, then they'd go forward.
But you wouldn't want to make it?
No, exactly. Make it clear what you want.
Prove what we already said.
I hate to say a condition put in there like that, since they already established the committee for the first year, but, I mean, just make it work out smoother. I wouldn't want to put a condition in there like that.
I think we have to just make sure we have some kind of say so, you can do a lot in a year.
Well, that's what they say, the second year is go to a nine member, three from Beach County board.
Did they say the years, did the year just start at the last meeting?
They didn't identify whether it's budget year, calendar year, twelve months, you know.
I hate to tell Greenwood County, we, we'd go along with it if you let three people from Lawrence County sit on the committee, you know, that'd just be, be kind of.
I think they would open up and just say, you know, who do you want to sit on the committee with you? I, I too hate to see people going into a, going into an endeavor and you have so many stipulations that you're not going to do. You already said, I'm not going to work with you. So what you need to do, everybody need to come in with a clean slate and then just start working together. What we can work on together, we work with. And when we have an issue, we just say, we have an issue with this and we have to go back and talk about it and break that.
But, I think, I think Mr. Wood makes a point, halfway through Newberry, I don't disagree with Chairman, but I think you got the right point, because I think the conversation that we've had, Mr. Chappell and Chairman County Council, I think Greenwood would welcome, not anything Lawrence won't do, but you know, if Lawrence would, would participate in this plan, I think that, you know, the, the three people at Lawrence County Council would point, whatever point that, whatever point that was, I think Greenwood would gladly accept, I believe, that's just what my impression was.
There wouldn't be nothing wrong with putting in that, said that by us endorsing this plan, we would like to go ahead and put a member on the committee if we could.
No, I, I think that definitely that we need some kind of say so, especially when you start getting into, if they get into the budget phase at all in the next, in the next year.
And Mr. Chairman, it sounds like what happened here, from what Mr. Wimmer's saying, what I'm getting is that they, it sounds like they're just trying to start, get the ball rolling and so they signed that committee, so I think they gladly welcome, you know, us on the committee.
Well, I guess we discussed the resolution of, will we do that tonight or will we do that as, as we?
If, pure recommendation, if, if you all can see your words clear or recommend, recommend that Plan B approved by county council and with the understanding that, you know, low funding upfront, the county basically regulates its side of the lake as it sees fit, I mean, that's a little, not artificially worded, something like that, and then, and then go ahead and prove it.
Mr. Chappell said, my worst fear is that this plan, when it gets put on a ship and played this, it's important we get something in place so that it doesn't happen.
So, I mean, like I said, we, I'm sure they would look a little at it, but also do they have a tentative start time or, or date or anything in the words already?
Not that I'm aware of, and if you have suggestions on that, I'm sure that they would be glad to, to entertain those and discuss those with you.
You lot first might be a good jumping off on that.
What was, what they?
You lot first might be a good jumping off on that, start the budget year.
That's right.
That's sort of, you know, opportune times a lot of things.
And you could have a meeting beforehand just to set up bylaws or set up, you know, how you want this organization to set up and establish, and then hit the ground running and do a lot of wanting.
I, I got the impression, it has been a while since I've met on this, I got the impression Newberry wasn't terribly excited. Is that the way you all kind of see it, or is it, is it, am I missing something?
We're hoping that once Lawrence County adopts the plan, that we can go together and approach Newberry County. We historically haven't had a strong relationship with Newberry County. We're hoping that Lawrence County has a stronger relationship than we have had.
We know.
And I think a lot of that honestly has to do with the COGS setup and how they're oriented more so, more closely to the Midlands and Columbia. So it's not really their fault that we haven't had a working relationship.
You share a couple of roadblocks. That's our main contact, but they, Mr. Adams, I don't know, he's a special county long term.
And, and, you know, like I said, we really want to have them on board because they have a, a portion on the lake and they have individual citizens that are depending on this whole process for their property values and for their state that they put into their, to their homes and property. But on the other side, if, if we don't, if Lawrence and Greenwood do not move forward on something and let's say Newberry County wants to not participate or doesn't want to participate right now, the two of us have to work together for the benefit of our population and our citizens to make this, make our, our lake usable and, and something that we can all be proud of. So we're all dependent upon it and we certainly don't want to do anything to discourage them or to go against their, their wishes, but we do want them to come to the table, but we've got to move forward if, if they don't want to participate.
If, if Lawrence County Council says next week or following week that they want to, you know, they want to approve this with the things we're talking about, and the chairman wrote a letter to your county saying that, you know, that we officially adopt this plan with these stipulations or whatever, and would like to appoint our members as soon as possible, we appreciate the meeting agreement, we think they'd go along with that?
Absolutely.
That, that might be a start.
That's right.
So, nobody's had a question, so what I would go by is accept this information as a guide to begin initial steps in the process of improving the lake area and presenting the council to establish.
I think, I think, I think recommend, recommend the county council to be, I think that's, I know you have a little bit of a question.
You come out of our committee and then committee, then committee present the council and then this.
Right.
So that's going to be our committee recommendation with that, we adopt the Greenwood plan, the plan Greenwood Lake.
Master plan, what do you call it?
With a few, with a resolution.
Are you stating that as a motion?
Second, you say that as a, second. If we have a, still, hold on. All of those in favor of approving the recommendation, raise your rating.
Three, zero. And if you all want to, we, we add that agenda next week and you make your, Mr. Chairman, you make your corporate committee and that, that should be it as far as, and then we follow up with, with letters, that kind of thing.
You want a resolution on that?
Yeah.
I'll get something.
I get that, field stable.
I'll get, I'll get something to you.
Okay.
Well, if we're done, we're going to the meeting. We're adjourned on this one. We'll take a break, I guess.
Fit in.
Anybody have a break?
There may be.
Say Lawrence, when you come to the, you told about.